Okay, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of Gloucester School Committee to order. It is December 1st, 2021. The mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged lifelong learners. That being said, this meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such as an in-person meeting of the school committee is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. We are going to be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations and we will, we will, which is of course not public, we will, we won't reconvene until seven o'clock. Even if we finish the executive session, we'll recess until seven o'clock. So we'll start the public meeting at seven o'clock. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the GTA, Teamsters, Asney, and nurses. And we'll return to open session at approximately seven o'clock.
Second.
Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Okay, so it passes unanimously. We're going into executive session. And like I said, we will reconvene public at seven o'clock. So see you all there. I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee back into public session. We've been in executive session. We started earlier and welcome everybody. The mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such as an in-person meeting of the school committee is not possible. This meeting will not, will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. The, we are back to meeting in remote just for this one meeting because of work being done on the internet systems for the whole school department. So we were not able to gather together in, at the high school as we have been, but we will be back in that mode in our, at our next meeting. This is just a one night problem that they've, that they are installing a new firewall and they have to shut down the whole system to do that. So that being said, we will, we'll skip the salute to the flag because we're all at home and move on to oral communications. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity, any regular, at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes and shall resubmit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That being said, I'm going to open oral communications. And so if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand or press star nine. And we have one person, Sarah McLanahan. Can we allow them to speak? Sarah?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, I have one topic I wanted to bring up and I'm not completely sure that it's a school committee topic, but I thought that this was a good place to start. Um, I just want to point out the need for Gloucester to take a proactive approach to updating the Thanksgiving curriculum being used in our schools. And more than that, to incorporate teaching about Native American history and culture as separate from Thanksgiving. There might be some teachers already doing this on their own. I haven't seen it yet in my limited experience, but it should be a district-wide priority to provide education in this area that's age-appropriate, historically accurate, respectful, and inclusive of Indigenous voices. Especially as a Massachusetts school system, we should be at the forefront of sharing the history of what happened here in this state and the Native American culture that's still active here and now in this state. So I'm wondering if that's something that's on the radar.
Well, it is now.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe, I don't, I don't know, I can't answer what, to what extent that's being addressed in the school system, but we can find out and we can report back next week, not in two weeks.
That would be great. I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Matthew Doherty.
I unmuted myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so this question is for Ben specifically. How are you doing, Ben? I can't hear you. Oh, there. Okay, now I can hear you. So I just wanted to respond to your response to my email I sent you the other day. It's, you, you replied that masks and vaccination reduce the amount of transmission of the disease. That's not the case this year. Is that correct?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I'm not used to having this as a question and answer period.
It's not a question and answer period. If you have a statement, you can make the statement. If you have a question, you can state the question, but we're not going to be responding to the question at this time.
Oh, okay. Um, all right then. That's too bad. I would like to get an answer to that. So maybe I'll just.
So, so Mr. Doherty, I did answer you very clearly in my email as you were about to read off. So, and I'm happy to talk to you outside the meeting on the phone or email, absolutely. So just this avenue, this arena isn't appropriate for individual conversations.
Then I will do it that way then, Ben. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no more hands raised, I'm going to close oral communications and we are going to move.
Jonathan, there is.
That's the same.
There is another hand raised.
No, that we've already, we've already heard from Mr. and Ms. McLanahan. She can.
Okay.
Yeah, she just.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to recognitions. Are there any recognitions that anybody would like to make? Kathy?
I was pleased to attend the Gloucester High School drama before, right before Thanksgiving, and I want to commend them for an excellent production. Clearly, there's a lot of work put in and it was very, very well done.
I agree. I saw it also. It was, it was very well acted and, and sort of poignant production. I've never heard of the play before. It was very interesting. Okay, any other recognitions? Okay, then we'll move on to, do we have students? Yes, Mara. We have anybody from the Student Advisory Council?
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
Okay. Jonathan, this is James. They might all be tuckered out from their hard work today at our blood drive. Able to pull off the blood drive today. A lot of hard work went into it, but really successful event to, you know, help out some of the low, low number, you know, low amounts of, of blood giving over the last, you know, period of time. So it was a great event at the school.
Okay, well, that's understandable. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Okay, and we might want to consider sending a thank you letter to Jeremiah Lecter, for the donation of $1,000 for bus passes for students in need.
On it.
Okay. Moving on to our educational issues and deliberations and the superintendent's report. We've got quite a lot of information to take in tonight, so I will hand it over to Superintendent Lummis, who will guide us through this. If you see her, Ben, we've lost you.
Sorry, just trying to wolf down some dinner while. Just give me a moment here. I'll pull up the, the right, the right window here.
And I apologize. I lost power for a few minutes there. So that took me a few minutes to get back.
Right, one second here.
I don't know what I missed, but.
Here we go. Almost there. Okay, share screen. Go. All right. Good, hello, folks. So I'm going to go through a few things here. I'll start as I have for the last year plus year, 20 months or so, begin with our, not only our primary objective, but our, also our COVID report. So safe educating all our students in our schools every day, in, in our schools every day, to maximize learning, address our students' full needs, and support community and family needs. Thank you, Kathy, for calling out the, um, the student production, drama production. I saw it as well. A great, great production. I understood most of it, not all of it, but it certainly had some really powerful messages in it. So really appreciate you, you, you highlighting that. A great work our high school students are doing. And we'll have more concerts and, and the light coming up in the next few weeks. So in terms of our COVID update, it's difficult news. I won't beat around the bush. We have a growing number of cases in the city and in the schools. You'll see 36 currently right now spread across the schools quite a bit. These, this has been changing pretty rapidly, especially over the last couple of days. Coming out of Thanksgiving break, you'll see 124 total cases so far this year among staff and students, you know, much higher amongst students and staff. At this point, we have very, we have very limited number of staff who, who have positive cases, very small number. So for adults, what we do see, and the city sees a growing number of cases in, you know, ages 20 and younger. That's reflected in our, in our schools. So you see Gloucester High School of 14, that's the highest it's been this year. Second here, hold on, sorry. Uh, and here's the, you know, just the, the looking back over the course of the school year. We've been going up and down and then this is trending up now, 36 cases in the city. Right now, there are 78 active cases. There are 34, so it's under half of that. At our last meeting, which was on, on November 10th, of the 80-plus new cases in the prior week, 31 of those have been in ages zero to 20. That's something we just didn't really see that much last year in terms of, you know, when we had lots of cases. They're more limited in, in the younger ages and the wastewater results continue to increase. They've been on upward trajectory for, I think, at least three weeks, for three weeks, I believe. So update on the recent case, the GHS, so there are 14 active cases at the high school. A little bit different than when we met last time, which is a few weeks ago. At that point, it was really concentrated in one grade and those seniors. Now it's spread across the grades. Students with symptoms, so we see typically students reporting symptoms quite a bit on Mondays and Tuesdays. And so our symptomatic testing is very stretched on those days. We send quite a few, you know, send folks home, meaning they go home whether they test positive or negative. If they have symptoms of any, of sickness, illness, we want them to be home and not come into school. But we do have, you know, some students are identified as positive with that symptomatic check. Some students are, and those positive cases at the high school, as far as we can tell, and it's harder this year to, to, to sort this out. They're a combination of out-of-school connections and in-school connections, as far as we can tell. Because there's, there's just, there's much more socializing, being together outside of school, being together outside unmasked than there was a year ago. So just harder for us to identify really, just, you know, what the, what the sources are because of that. Test and, test and, our testing and our close contact tracing, our contact tracing are, are being really stretched. Being really on our, you know, our, in some, some days outstripping our capacity, which is really crucial. I understand the city is looking for and may hire at least another additional contact tracer, but we're also now going, we're also in the process of hiring contact tracers as well. The, the schools themselves, our contact tracing inside the school has been done by our nurses, nurse leader, and our, and our principals, really. And, and we, and they can't keep up with that at this point, which makes sense. So we are actively recruiting, advertising and recruiting for contact tracers, I, nurse substitutes, and also nurse substitutes. In, in a good sense, I made sort of an all-call to my staff and family communication, I think it was a week ago, and we've had really good response to that. So, which is wonderful. And also, we've reached out directly to the state and, and very quickly yesterday, they have given us additional team of contact, of testers, and those folks were on our grounds today. So, you know, we are addressing the, the, the capacity issues pretty, very directly and having, you know, at this point, some luck. We'll have to train the contact tracers, but our nurses are, you know, really, really, really challenged right now. And, uh, but getting them some more help as well and have, have, I think there's some hope. There has been little hope on nurse substitutes and more nurses up until very recently, but we're a little hopeful on that at this point. Just, I just want to illustrate this, something, not something I've shown you before, but just to show you a little bit how test and stay is working. So test and stay is for students or staff who are close contacts in school, who are not, are not vaccinated, not really staff, because all staff are vaccinated pretty much. But any students who are unvaccinated and within, with three feet or closer as close contacts, they are eligible to, to stay in school as long as they do our test and stay, which is a rapid test every day, and, and don't have symptoms. And so you see, what I'm, what I want to show you here is just how it sort of works across schools. So you're looking at the day before Thanksgiving break and then the days, Monday, the Monday and Tuesday this week. And just want to show you something how, you know, so what we're seeing now is more follow-through on test and stay. If you don't want to participate, participate in test and stay, you have to stay home. So you saw just before Thanksgiving, you know, eligible to test at the high school, 47 kids, that's a lot of kids, okay? Eligible to do test and stay, 35 came through, and now you're seeing how it's, you know, 13 and 11. So we're seeing, we're starting to see not only the high school, other places, whenever someone is eligible for test and stay, they are now more inclined to do it. And that may be partially that people now are registering for, for the testing, you know, more so than they had in the past because the urgency is going up. And then here in the orange part, you see that it can really change day to day, the test and stay. The test and stay period is, is, you know, is really five days in school plus a weekend is, is the time that folks need to do, do test and stay. And so it really can vary either by school to school. You see EGS is, was at zero the last few days, but West Parish was at 13. But then today, West Parish drops down to six. So it really changes quite a bit day to day, week to week. Thankfully, we have Kylie Davis and, and working with Jeff Parko, and Kylie is really organizing, coordinating our, our state teams and making sure they are where they need to be. That's been complicated, especially early in the week, but now with this additional testing team from the state, we should sort things out nicely on that. So. And the COVID weekly safety check testing, also, we used to call it the pool testing. I reported to you in November that, especially at GHS and O'Malley, we were not able to, because of the, the organization of the testing teams, we're not, we're not able to test as many people as, as were registered. We've really straightened that out again, thanks to Kylie and Jeff. And our, our percentages of, of testing folks for doing the, the weekly safety check is much, much higher than it has been even going back to last year. So we're doing quite much better on that, and that's an important piece. The other piece on this is last year in the springtime, there were hardly, I think there were a total of three positive groups across O'Malley and GHS. This year, we're finding a positive group at one of our schools every week. And that's just, you know, an example of that it's more prevalent than it has been in the past in, in our schools. That's a reality we're living with, you know, we're all living with, which is different than a year ago. And especially different in the spring when things were very, very low. Let me pause there and just see if folks have any questions. Max Schenk will be with us at our next meeting to answer more questions, just about where things are going and what he sees coming up.
Laura?
Thank you. Just a question, with these numbers going up so dramatically around us, are you seeing any evidence, I know the contact tracing is hard, of, you know, what kind of evidence of in-school transmission are we seeing?
Yeah, it's, 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 it was so, it was so much simpler last year to identify, you know, you know, that we, you know, and the way we identified school, in-school transmission last year was, was a student a close contact of, of a student in school? And that person, that person become positive, right? And because we had, you know, two things, more limited numbers and also less, I guess I would just call it socializing outside of school, you know. You know, many more things weren't happening, especially this time of year, you know. You didn't have as many sports, didn't have as many after-school things, didn't have as much, you know, just like parties, that sort of stuff. And I mean birthday parties or, or high school kids hanging out, right? So like, just to add a little bit more, you know, three, three weeks ago, when, when the high school had a lot of seniors, they all reported to us, you know, they're open about it, like the different things they're doing together in their friend circles. And so where someone may have been a close contact, and we knew they're a close contact of a person who's in school, they also may be hanging out with that school, with that child, with that student outside of school. So how do we know it's in-school, in-school transmission? We do know that, you know, you know, the most obvious place to look is the test and stay students, you know. So there are a number of test and stay students, you know, any given week that, that, that turn out positive. We don't, we aren't tracking that yet because we're, we're just, you know, having trouble keeping up with all the record-keeping on that sort of thing. So, but it's something that specifically, I think, is a good place to, to check that. So I'm sorry, though, I don't have any specific numbers on this like I did last year, but it's something we have to keep on watching and look at and see how we can nail it down. And I think the best way to look there is the test and say students.
And can I just ask one more thing? And also, what kind of messaging is going out to families, especially at the elementary level where kids have a little less, a little bit less agency for a while, around unmasked indoor events?
Yeah, so we, actually, the, um, principal, the, the five elementary school principals, and I talked about that today. And I asked them to be very clear about that in all their messaging is to, you know, is let's lead on this, you know. I find that folks are, anyway, that we can lead on this, we should lead on this, and we should be very clear in our messaging. Like I was just prior to Thanksgiving about families, you know, if you're indoors with people, please be masked as much as possible. It still is, you know, it doesn't eliminate, I mean, actually masks do a really remarkable job on eliminating transmission. They're not foolproof, nothing is with this disease. But so you'll continue, people will see more and more messaging from our principals and from myself, being very clear about, you know, limit birthday parties. If you're indoors, please wear masks, be outdoors, you know. Wear, if you don't want to wear a mask, be outdoors. It's just, it's just at this point, you know, we know that being indoors, especially as the weather gets colder, will increase transmission. You know, we know that now.
Just given that the numbers have gone up so dramatically, you just don't know where the messaging is, you know, citywide and statewide and in our district around, making sure people really understand what's happening.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, you know, we have positions where we can get messages out, and I think we should, we should use that to urge folks to, to be safe and, and, and take care and take caution and, you know, folks will, will still, they have their choices, you know. We understand that, but I think it makes sense for us to be clear about, you know, how to make sure that children can stay, children and students can stay in school. All right, any other, I think.
Melissa?
Sorry, did I miss, when we were talking through the last slides, did you say what the vaccination rate was at the high school?
No, no, I don't have an update on that. Like I said, having a little trouble on some of, you know, just reporting on data here, just, there's literally have some, Jeff Parko and Kylie Davis can only do so much is what it gets, gets down to. They, they continue to be human, although they're trying to prove otherwise with all the work they're doing. So I do know this, though, from, from the city report is that children who are younger than 12, the city is at 30% vaccination rate, you know. So remember, there's always a difference between the, the city, you know, numbers and the school numbers, okay? But, but I do know from the Department of Health reporting that those students, those children who are most recently eligible, so under 12, were at 30% across the city.
Okay. I, I just ask because I mean, I'm, I am of the person that believes that COVID is with us forever, and it doesn't surprise me that the, the statistics are going up. If you look at where we were last year, we're probably at the same place. But I think messaging about getting vaccinated is just as important because, like I said, I believe COVID is here and it's just a matter of protecting yourself so that you don't get very sick.
Yeah, and I agree. We are way, way. In terms of total case numbers, we're way ahead of where we were last year. We have 124 total cases. Last year, all told, we had 180 for the whole year.
I mean, I don't know any household that's wearing masks out of concern for the increase in, in COVID right now. It's more getting more vaccination out there so that people can be unmasked.
Yeah, yeah, I think, we're living with this in a much different way than we were last year. You're completely right. And my last, you can, last two communications, the families, you know, encourage them to get vaccinated and the children vaccinated against COVID, COVID and the flu, you know. Both of those things will help us keep, you know, illness out of our schools and transmitting and, and keep, you know, children, staff healthy, but also keep transmission lower too, you know. It's, um, you know, it's, 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 it takes all these pieces to do the best we can. And, and so we'll can, I'll continue to message that, you know, encourage families to do so with vaccinations. It is their choice. I appreciate that, but, but it makes sense for us to be clear about, you know, the best way of attacking this disease is through vaccinations, without a doubt. All right, okay to continue?
Yep.
Great, so I might, the next, so just to give you overview, we're going to go over tonight. First, Greg Bach, Mordonahue, and James Cook will give us an MCAS report on grades six to 10, similar to the report we got, we gave to you in the public on grades three through five. We'll have our first look at the East Gloucester Veterans School Naming Process, go over my goals and evaluation process. You may skip the update on Gloucester Public Schools' plan for ongoing improvement just because of time, and then we'll close with the budget development calendar. So like important information tonight. So I'll hand it over to Greg Bach and Maura and James Cook. and Maura and James Cook. Welcome. You all know Greg and James, I think this is the first time you've had, we've had Maura on the line here. So welcome, Maura. Maura Donahue is our coordinator, middle school coordinator of curriculum and instruction. So, you know, just she's new to us, so we're still being very friendly to her. But really important piece as the, as we'll talk about tonight, the middle school continues to, you know, hone and revamp and work on its curriculum and also continue to improve and strengthen instruction as well, but but I'll let these folks jump in and Greg, you want me to, yeah. Do you want me to give context on the middle school or wait till you guys get into the presentation a little bit here?
Why don't I, let me get the presentation up and then maybe if you could lead us in, I'll, I'll give you a cue there for when to share a little bit of that, the background.
Great. I could use more cues on when to speak, when not to.
Okay. Apologize, one moment. It's not cooperating here. How's that? You can see that all right? Okay. So just as a brief reminder, I gave you, we did a presentation not long ago about the elementary schools. And we had pretty good results to report. We saw, in most cases, we saw at or above the at or above the state averages in almost every grade and subject area at the elementary schools. As you'll see, the picture is not quite as, as good, it's a, there's some variation at the, at the middle and high school. But I'll remind you just to get started that 2021 MCAS was very different than prior years. Not at the high school, but at the middle school, we also had a modified test with part A or part B, but not students not taking the both sections, which is the norm. We had some students testing at home without the typical testing structures. Once again, we do not have the typical growth scores, which are calculated year on year based on cohort performance the prior year. We do not have those the same growth calculation formula that is normally used. Accountability data and designations are not available for 2021. There was some different impact of remote learning and staffing by subject and grade level and just generally the statewide impact of the pandemic. In the following slides, which are just a condensed view, last week I sent a fairly long list of detailed reports that you could go through if you wanted to. We can take a look at any of those tonight, but much as I did last time, we'll just cover some of the highlights and get to the, what is really the most important thing, which is what do we have in place and what do we have planned to respond to and to continue our improvement. The following tables, you will notice that some cells are shaded in red and green or green. That's not a state designation, it's not, it's not an exhaustive statistical analysis either. The decision to shade red or green was really to aid you in identifying some of the percentage points that were greater than five, so six or above. And then when it comes to scaled score, which is, seems to be a lot less subject, or not a lot less, it's less subject to large fluctuations. I picked greater than three, so four and above for scaled score. And this is simply just to draw your attentive attention to some areas that were either particularly high or low. Again, it's not, not a hard statistical analysis, nor is it a, you know, a color that comes from the state that's simply local. Before we get into the results at a glance overview, Ben maybe could share a little bit about, you know, where, where the middle school has been, because we're, we're going to start with a section on the middle school. And Lynn Beatty was not able to join us tonight. And so Maura Donahue, I'll be introducing in a moment, is going to be working with me to share about the kinds of things that we'll be doing to address issues. And Ben, maybe if you could share a little bit about the historical perspective.
Yeah, I think I'm, as I laid out pretty clearly in my entry plan report earlier this fall. We have a really strong foundation at our elementary schools and work that's been happening at our elementary schools to revamp the curriculum, strengthen it, make it more aligned with the statewide standards. You know, strengthen our data analysis. And what that means is understanding how our students are doing, what their strengths are, where they're struggling. And then really work across the elementary schools, led by our principals and our coaches and their close work with our teachers on how to strengthen instruction, but also really strengthen, deepen learning and improve and improve academic achievement. That's really been a eight-year process or so. Very little of which I've been involved in, but thankfully, many other great people have been, including our teachers. Middle school in many ways, as I also said in my entry plan, you know, we really do have to really focus on deepening student engagement and deepening student learning, improving academic achievement as measured by a variety of measures at the middle school. And my sense is, and I think this is borne out, is that in many ways, the middle school is at a similar place that the elementary schools were six, seven, eight years ago. We, as a district, have not supplied or applied the support and resources, attention, focus and determination for curriculum, for analysis, for support, for professional development. That really will make a difference for teachers and make a difference ultimately for our students at the middle school yet. You know, with, and so we'll talk about some of the steps we made for this year. And then also the work that needs to go forward will be, you know, a big part of our plan for ongoing improvement, but just want to sort of give that context of, you know, what folks will see and what folks have seen, especially, you know, just in terms of the one indicator being MCAS at the middle school for a number of years. And that's, that's one of the primary reasons that, you know, they're in the sustainable improvement process with the state. Our target assistance process with the state is, because we haven't been able to, we haven't focused and supported and and strengthened the work there like we have at elementary schools, but no needs to happen. And now it's a question of making sure we do it well. I mean, include many folks in doing that well, because it'll take certainly all of us working together on it. So. So that's sort of context in terms of where we are and what you might see, but also what you've been looking at for a few years here regarding the middle school. Yeah. So Maura and Greg, it's back to you.
Yep, thank you. This first slide, which is an overview. I took the 2019 percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations and put it next to the state meeting and exceeding both for nineteen and for twenty-one. And one of the things that does stand out in this is that in nineteen, you know, five out of there were, there were some real trouble spots in five out of the six areas, ELA and math relative to the state. And in 2021, what you'll notice over on the far right is that there was a really steep decline across the state at every grade level in middle school. Ranging from, sorry, I've got, I need to be able to see that column, ranging from ten percent decline in grade seven at the, at the state level to thirty percent and at the section, actually thirty-six in grade six math. So just, you know, very quickly, a couple spots to note would be grade six ELA stayed at the same percentage as in 2019. While the state declined eleven percent percentage points in that area. Grade six ELA did, did not decline relative to the state. Or did not, yeah, did not decline. Grade seven, only a few points off of, off of the state. The trouble, the biggest area of concern at this point is grade eight math. And the state saw a really substantial decline as well, thirty percent percentage points. And we saw forty-eight. The next slide is scaled score. Again, 2019 Gloucester and the state. There were fewer areas where there were great differences from the state. And in fact, a grade seven ELA, while seventh graders across the state declined by four point eight scaled score points, which is actually pretty substantial. Grade seven ELA increased by point six. So that was a real standout. Again, you can see that in general, the declines at the middle school relative to the state were less, less severe than statewide. Next slide, set of slides, we, we go into some of the subgroups and the slides have been condensed a bit from the long form ones that you had in your packets from last week. And these are just distilled down to a few of the subgroups. The areas to note are the Hispanic Latino population struggled in grade six ELA. Again, it's a, it's a smaller, smaller number of students, but still that is something to pay attention to. At grade seven, that was, that was a real bright spot and average scaled score, as you can see, is above the state in, for all students, grade seven, four ninety-six point five to four ninety-four point two. So that's very good news that our ELA grade seven was above the state average and in almost all the subgroups, either above or fairly close to the state level.
Greg, just to point out there, if you can stay on this grade seven slide, sorry. The economic disadvantage, that's, that's, that's an important number there. And honestly, I say it's surprising, not because of O'Malley, it's surprising for any school to really be exceeding in that, to that level, that's good. Now, at the same time, you know, below, two cells below, you know, while, while we're ten percentage points above an economically disadvantaged students, we're ten points below on Hispanic Latino students. So that's just you know, there's some good news and some difficult news there. Thank you.
Yep, grade eight. Not in ELA, there were a few couple, a couple areas, all students was a little bit lower than the state. And also, again, the Hispanic Latino subgroup. Math at grade six. Average scaled score similar to above in, again, average scaled score above for economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, fairly close. And high needs, very close to the state as well, and grade six math. Grade seven math. Most of these figures in subgroups were very close to the state above students with disabilities, four seventy-six, four seventy-three. Again, Hispanic Latino subgroup was the one, one group that is substantially lower. Again, high needs overall, higher at, I'm sorry, grade seven math. The average scaled score for a grade seven high needs is higher than the state average for high need students. Grade eight math is, was definitely the the most challenged grade level and subject area for last year with all students substantially below grade eight math in the state. And almost all subgroups slightly below or more significantly below the state. The, each of the, these are the links to reports that you saw last week, be happy to go into any of those for greater detail. And if not, the next slide is the one where I'd like, Maura, sorry, I'm not able to see any participants at the moment. Let me readjust my screen.
Laura has her hand up.
Okay.
Thanks. Just before we move on, just a couple of questions. Given all of what you said about how different the, the testing was this year and all the, all the differences in it. How does, how does what we see here, you know, I don't know what kind of value to give, you know, to give these scores. You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, how well they're evaluating. You, you would know that better than I would. I'm wondering if, if, if student work in classrooms and based on teacher evaluations reflects the same sort of scoring that we see here in the MCAS.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an excellent question. It was an unusual year. There were a lot of differences in the test, the test itself, and also the way it was administered. I think the takeaway that is important from, from the results from last year is that we understand that students across the state had challenges, they all had, the most, almost all schools tested under the same conditions. So there are some general conclusions that we can use, and I think we need to use them cautiously, but there are still, there's really no denying a few of the areas. For example, grade six, a grade eight math. And to really look in and understand what was happening for that group of students. I think when I shared one spot that was challenging, which was grade three math at the elementary, our math coaches all said, oh, absolutely, we could have predicted that one because that's, that's the group of second graders who missed an entire year of manipulatives. So there may be some, some understanding that the math teachers can, can glean from, from that, but I think overall, we know that there's, there's some challenge areas. We know that some of our, a couple of our subgroups had some real challenges and that's an area to focus on. Particularly English learners, we're going to need to look carefully at how, what instruction looks like, what our curriculum looks like for, for access for those as students. And then even deeper, we can look at individual student results and understand of the questions that, that they encountered on the test, which were the ones that they struggled in. So there is some, there's still some value in identifying students who need further support on an individual level. I can't respond to that sort of firsthand experience that the teachers had with the students. I'm sure they would have a lot to say about, you know, what, how things went last year, what they concentrated on and what were the things that they felt were real gains. And I know there were many. So I, unfortunately, Lynn Beatty is not here to be able to share some of that more direct information. But maybe that's something that we could share on another night.
That, that's great. Thank you. And just, I know I can see your slide is what are we doing in response? So I'm not, I'm not going to ask before. But just given declines were so dramatic, frankly, across the state. Yeah. I, you know, it's, it's, it's quite stunning to see what happened. I'm hoping that there are some sort of collective, there's collective work statewide going on about how to address these, these issues. Assuming that there is.
Yeah. And one of the things that I should mention is that in, in some of the Yeah. And one of the things that I should mention is that in, in some of the more detailed reports, you know, you might notice that the middle school participation rate was sky high. They were, you know, ninety seven, ninety eight, ninety nine percent of students were there and, and, and tested and were in school and that was incredibly important last year. And that was not the case across the district in, in, in all schools and districts. And I think I saw another hand up.
Melissa.
Thank you, Greg. I'm looking forward to seeing the next slides. I have a lot of questions, but I'm sure that some will be answered in the next slides, but I, I'm struggling with this conversation a lot, only because I've been on the school committee for a long time. So I guess my question to you, Greg, is what do you see as the trajectory from O'Malley over the past 10 years? I mean, we, we've, we've been struggling. We seem to compare ourselves with state average, which means we're comparing ourselves with average, not above average. And we're not even getting to average. I mean, it's not just this year, it's been many years. So I guess I'd like to hear from you at some point, doesn't have to be tonight, but like where, where is the improvement? I mean, I understand that last year was COVID. We were also a school that was in class more than most. And I'm not seeing that our scores really reflect that. The fact that we were in school and, and expected more. So I'm curious to see a bigger trajectory as opposed to since two thousand and nineteen to find out what the real dynamics are at the school. We do have state intervention. Are we improving because of it? Are we even getting the intervention because of COVID? I don't know. But this is very concerning and I just hope that we can have a bigger conversation on the results, not just of MCAS for this year, but for O'Malley as a whole and where the progress is.
Yeah.
Over the past 10 years.
The, the short answer is if, if you look in general on twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, which were full years, the results were not good. They, they weren't. There are areas where there were some areas of strength, but in general, I know they have stayed relatively low. And, you know, the twenty nineteen results, you know, led to sustainable improvement plans and, and state involvement. Now, unfortunately, right after we began that work with the state, a pandemic hit. So the, the, also the answer to, are we seeing the, you know, sort of the, the benefit or impact of, of the focused resources? You know, one of those resources that we've added is, is going to speak to the next slide. But I, I think I have to sort of echo what, what Ben said, which is they're not where they, we'd like them to be at all. And in fact, it does feel a bit to me. If you recall, when we had a number of elementary schools that were in a very similar shape and really embarked on a district wide element, all elementary school. Real focused curricular and instructional improvement and partnering with BSRI and, and really sort of extensive work. We also hired coaches and engaged in an enormous amount of training. And we've had a big payoff and that's been across the board and you know, I think has been said. That same kind of sustained resource allocation and focus is something that we, you know, we, we did not do to the same level for the middle school. And hopefully this is the, a strong start that we're seeing now.
And very quickly, does the fact that O'Malley is an innovation school prevent us from doing any kind of intervention like we did with the elementary schools? I don't know what innovation actually means anymore. I did when we became O'Malley Innovative School, but is there any limitations on how we can assist from a school district standpoint?
Yeah, like I can understand. So there are no limitations it places on us. I, I see no errors where, where that status is actually helping us. You know, because the state has really sort of let go of that, of that effort. You know, it's effort from many, from a number of years ago. So, you know, it hasn't, so there's nothing, it's, I don't, I don't see any evidence of, of any particular ways helping us. But it certainly wouldn't be hindering us, I don't believe. You know.
Thank you.
Yep. Kathy. Kathy, you're muted.
Greg, if this is part of what's coming up, just stop me quickly in my question, but you know, at the elementary schools, we have all sorts of benchmark assessments on students, whether it's, you know, two minutes, three minutes or whatever, so that when we end up with MCAS results, we, we have somewhat of an idea of our kids making progress throughout the year. And, you know, there's a handle on where are we in the fall, where are we in the winter, where are we in the spring? And I'm wondering, have we, as part of this, do we have enough resources allocated to make sure that we are addressing those kinds of touch points so that we understand if we're teaching the material in the right time? Are we teaching it effectively? Are we, you know, back to, as you say, all the effort that, you know, sharing best practices or sharing kind of what's working with one kind of learner versus another kind of learner? You know, do we have things like that for science so that we know when kids, you know, enter eighth grade that there's only, you know, a third of what else they're going to be tested on? Because I assume the eighth grade test is a cumulative test as opposed to, you know, ELA being kind of grade to grade. So that is my question, both from a educational perspective, but also a financial perspective. Do we have the tools that we need to have, to better understand more regularly where our students are?
Yeah. And one of the, I'm going to let Maura talk because there's a lot of information on the next slide that and I believe she will probably address some of that. And one of the big pieces that the schools committee heard about and supported in the budget process was the STAR three sixty adoption, which is now assessing and benchmarking students can progress monitor with it as well in all grades in math and literacy. So that's something that was new last year and is widely used this year and continues to be, the data continues to be analyzed. So I'm going to let Maura talk about the, that and many other things in the next slide and, and then we'll see if there are further questions.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for, for having me. And as we go through this slide, you'll see a lot of things have been put into place with the school's committee, committee support to get us moving in the right direction. First of all, obviously, the position that I hold as the curriculum coordinator overseeing a majority of the pieces that we're going to talk about. I'm going to jump around a little bit, just based on some of the questions that I heard. I'm going to start with the STAR three sixty. STAR three sixty is an assessment tool that I believe came into play at O'Malley during the last school year. But we've really been able to, to take it to a different level this year. It assesses our students in their literacy skills and math skills. We benchmark our students three times a year. So when they came in, in the fall, we benchmarked, they, they took the benchmark assessment. They'll take it again in the winter and again in the spring so we can track progress. But beyond that, once we receive the results from the initial benchmark assessment this fall, our, our content teachers, our math teachers got together, really digging into what the data told us from a curriculum standpoint, but also from the standpoint of where our students were coming in at every individual grade level. And we, I was fortunate enough with Greg's help to just come in and be able to gather material from our fifth graders as they were coming up to, to sixth grade over the summer. So that was very helpful. We did the same thing in math and then we were also able to identify students, particularly in the area of literacy that we wanted to make sure we addressed and provided additional supports for. One of the tools that we are using is a literacy intervention, a targeted literacy intervention teacher who is working with small groups of students to strengthen particular literacy skills that, that kids needed support in. We did additional assessments for these students just to make sure we had a solid understanding of what exactly in the whole large scope of literacy did we need to focus on with each individual student. So one of the questions addressed, mentioned like the quick two, three minute little dipstick assessments and, and we have done that with a, a large number of students already starting this year to really target what it is that our students need. Are they, do they need work in fluency? Is the fluency impacting the comprehension? We, for the most part, our fluency and decoding has, has been very solid for our students and, and our focus needs to be around comprehension of text overall. So we have that benchmarking going on. We have the progress monitoring going on using STAR three sixty and other tools. We have the literacy intervention teacher and, and myself collaborating to continue those assessments and, and working with the teachers to, to catch kids so that we're, we're not having students falling through the cracks. There's other tools that we've been using this year to also support that. You see in your slide references to actively learn and freckle. Those are another two tools that are online components, but can provide support to students. Because it, it calibrates to the level of, of what, where the student is working in his particular content area. And we can use that information to support in class and with the teachers, but also to provide additional remediation and, and support through the computer program that we, we might not have been able to, to get the students to have without that. There's a lot of work going on through the summer program. There's been additional adjustment counselors, our PACE program, special educators that have been brought on board to, to provide support around special education needs and also around social emotional learning and, and meeting the kids where they are because you know, obviously I, I haven't been in Gloucester very long, but across the board, if we don't meet their, their social emotional needs, we're not going to get anywhere with the academics. So that's really a critical piece. The other element that is an anchor to what we're doing is the work with the state. Since I came on board, we've had several meetings with the team that is working with us from the state. And we're using our instructional leadership teams, our teacher leadership committees and all collaborating together to, to take their suggestions, to have them help us dig into the data that we're collecting and make solid thoughtful decisions for our students and also to help guide us in a curriculum review process. So we really can look very deeply at our ELA and math curriculum, the tools that we're using and, and work with the state to make sure that, that we have everything that we need to be successful. So I hope that answers some of your questions, but I'm happy to, to take any others that, that you might have.
And Maura, just you, something we just talked about this morning, which is that you're going to be starting that curriculum review. Hopefully within, I think by a week after this, after next, getting started before the holiday break and then working closely with the state to, to evaluate existing curriculum and also potentially select high quality curriculum for across the grade levels.
Melissa.
First, I want to say welcome, Maura. Thank you very much. Very excited about this new position and, and you in it. Because you're clearly zoning in on the issues right from the start, which is great. So I guess my question is school committee has a concern with O'Malley. We always have. How can we get updates, progress updates? I mean, I understand you're doing the three sixty and the testing, but how is it that this can be brought before the committee so that we can discuss it? And discuss any adjustments that might need to be made through the budget to help this progress along. So do you see an ability to come back, say, the end of January or February with an update based on some testing that's being done? I don't know. I'm asking. I don't want, I'm not putting pressure on you or the superintendent. I'm just trying to figure out how can we hear more about what's going on and, and be more informed and able to react?
I'm more than willing to, to come and talk about, I'm, I'm, I'd say this to everybody. I'm such a nerd about all of these things, particularly in the realm of, of literacy development. So I am happy to come on and talk about it, you know, periodically throughout the school year. I definitely think there will be the opportunities to bridge that gap and need the support of the school committee, particularly as we perfect the literacy intervention and incorporate a math intervention as well. We, we have not been able to find a, a ideal candidate for that math intervention role. But it's definitely, you know, at, at the top of our mind and something that as we get people, the right people in place, we, we want to make sure that the tools they have on hand and the supports that we're providing them are exactly what our students need. So I'm happy to, to continue to come in and, and check in with you to provide updates at, at whatever time period is appropriate.
So more, you don't know this, but, but Lynn does. And also Melissa just responded directly. We actually have the O'Malley learning benchmarks report scheduled for the, the February twenty third school committee meeting. Yeah. So we already had that and, but in addition to that, it's really important that the, I mean, I'm asking the, the, the school committee to through program subcommittee or the full committee to continue to ask for updates about the work on Chris, as more as, you know, summarizing curriculum review at the, at the middle school interventions. How are, you know, benchmarks are doing, you know, that, you know, asking that of me and therefore our, our whole team is the way we keep attention and keep focused. And then also present what's going well and where we see that we're having some challenges, but, but that's really about agenda setting and working together to make sure we keep, keep doing that.
Ben, thank you. I, I hope you don't think I was overstepping my bounds by asking more directly. I know it, it goes through you. But I guess I'm a little bit excited to hear what she has to say and enthusiasm she's bringing to this conversation. So.
No, I just wanted to add the detail of, 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 we're really on the same page as what you're asking about and, and more wouldn't know about that date, but I know Lynn does and wanted just to remind the committee of, I don't expect all of you to have all our reports that we're going to give you memorized. So that's no problem at all. And I think it's, it's, anyway. Other questions for Maura? I'm not seeing any.
Can I ask a general question? Maura, since we have not had a chance to meet in person, I also want to say welcome to, to Gloucester and to O'Malley. I'm, I'm glad you are here. I'm glad this position certainly is here. What? What are your general, you know, is this position and, and what you are looking at in terms of the work ahead? You know, is that what you were expecting? Is that kind of a things you've seen elsewhere?
It's exactly what I was expecting. I, throughout the interview process and, and learning more about O'Malley and about Gloucester. Ben and Greg and Lynn and everyone on the team were, were very easy to talk to and really gave me a good sense of, of exactly what I was coming into. And this is work that I have seen and been a part of in, in my previous roles. It, it, it's a lot. It takes time, but these foundational pieces that we're putting into place are, are going to reap benefits. I, I'm confident of it.
Thank you.
Just, just to add, just to sort of put a summary on this is, you know, I hope, I hope the school committee does see in this slide things that we've talked about, but really have put in place. things that we've talked about, but really have put in place, not not just recently either, but also especially recently additional adjustment counselor, the the interventionists, you know, obviously more as positioned and who can help, you know, who can really coordinate this work, which you always need. It's very, very hard for a principal on her or his own to coordinate this type of curriculum instructional work, data work. And so having whether it's our coaches at our elementary school or more in this case with the team at at O'Malley, you know, these are investments and resources that, you know, with the school committee support, we've allocated some just recently and some a little while ago, but but they they, what we want to do is create a foundation here and an approach that really is is middle school specific, O'Malley specific, but has a lot of the ingredients that we know from the elementary work. I asked for two things. One, your your support in it and your push, you know, keep pushing us. And also realization that that this this work does take time. It took time at the elementary school. It'll take time here. But please be impatient with us at the same time.
Melissa?
Thank you. To the superintendent and to Maura. I I think it was well said when we said if we don't focus on the social emotional, we're we're not going to get too far. So I guess my question is, I know we put more adjustment counselors in the budget for this year. So I guess probably not tonight because you may not know off the top of your head, but at some point I'd like to hear exactly how many adjustment counselors we have and how many kids are assigned to each adjuster. Because that that position facilitates kids to get better. And if there's 50 kids seeing one adjustment counselor that's overwhelmed, that's a concern. So bottoms up, I think we need to be strong starting with the social emotional. So I'd be curious to hear what the the ratio is for the adjustment counselors versus how many kids are dealing with. For someone that works in this community with all the ugliness, I know a lot that goes on and I know what's in the schools and I just truly stand by that adjustment counselors have a huge role in O'Malley moving forward. So I'm curious to know that information and keep track of that as we go forward.
So Melissa, you're going to start to hate me in a moment here, but on January 26th, Amy Cam will be here to present on social emotional learning and mental health support. Already knowing, just as you said, it is a crucial piece, supporting our students and our children, you know, in order so they are connected to our schools and connected to our teachers, but also allows them to learn. So I know it's actually sooner than it sounds, but January 26th, we'll have a a full update, including the questions you just asked.
I'm happy to hear. Obviously, I wasn't in part of the calendar development for next year because I seem to have missed that memo, but that's okay. So I'm glad the information is coming forward.
It's it's like I said, I understand a lot going on, hard to remember all those, all those, all those details. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and we have Mr. Cook with us, I believe. I don't see him on the call, but maybe he's just off the screen. Yeah, okay, there he is.
Thank you, Maura, before you go.
Yeah, oh, Maura, thank you for coming tonight and just, you know, I I know it's been a difficult start to the year. I'm not sure if all of you know that Maura's introduction to Gloucester was being pressed into service as a science teacher for the first part of the year. So she's have a great spirit and and steps in and does whatever is needed, but I'm glad that she's now available to be focusing on this kind of work. It's incredibly important. And we really got lucky having somebody who's so experienced, but also really, really good natured and able to connect with all kinds of different people. So that combination is going to help us really move forward. So thank you, Maura. Very much appreciated. And you don't have to hang out. You can go and hopefully get some dinner or enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maura.
Okay, Mr. Cook, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck.
Yeah, this slide just sort of repeats the the same information about the the shading.
Okay, so at GHS, you'll you'll see that in in many areas, there is reason for some cautious optimism about, particularly about the direction in in which we're headed. As you've heard from all the other presentations, in in some ways where, you know, comparing 2021 to other years, you know, there's, there's a lot of static in that comparison and that data. But we're going to, you know, note what we can out of this. And and then I'll want to put all of this into the context of some, you know, the the trend also that took place between 2018 and and 2019 and then 2019 to 2021 to give a sense of kind of the direction. And also some, you know, some places for concern. And then in the end, you know, what we're doing to continue growth in 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 the areas, we've had some progress and address some of the areas of more acute need. So you'll see, looking at and comparing 2021 results to 2019 results, we the the percentage change at the school, we 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 quite significantly outperformed the state in that percentage change there with the students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. So we went from 46% meeting or exceeding to 65% in 2021. And then in math, we went from 47% in 2019 to 51% in 2021. Again, the reason I say cautious optimism is because of some of the wrinkles related to the testing and the participation in the testing that I'll refer to in a moment. So in the next slide, we'll see again, this is the scaled score and you'll see the same kind of trend. So just like when we were looking at students meeting or exceeding expectations in 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 seeing some strength compared with the state, you'll see the same with the scaled score. Increasing our scaled score by 6.6% in ELA and just a little bit, but still an improvement where the state declined, right? We went up point seven and the state declined 4.5 on the scaled score. So in the next slide, we get into the participation rate. So you'll 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 see that our participation rate on MCAS was lower than the state. Us, we are seven points lower in ELA and also seven points lower in math in the participation rate. Now, the reason for that has to do with a a a policy decision that we made. And and the policy decision that we made is related to how students in the class of 2022, students expected to graduate this year. Those students do not need to pass an English or math MCAS in order to graduate. They they simply need to, because they missed the opportunity for MCAS their sophomore year. They did not need to take the MCAS in subsequent years in order to graduate this spring. They simply need to pass an MCAS preparation, English class and math class and science class. Now, why that's important here is because some members of the class of 2022 were a little bit behind with credits. So were considered sophomores last year. And so as sophomores, even though we expected them to catch up and graduate on time, as sophomores in a normal year, they would have been expected to test and the state included them on the rosters. Our decision was because they don't need the MCAS to graduate, the four days of instruction was more important than having them take an MCAS that wasn't going to be a graduation requirement for them anyway. So those students did not test at Gloucester High School, did test at some other schools. And so for us, that accounts, those 22 students who are members of the class of 2022 who didn't test account for the gap. We would have had, I'm just going to skip over to my my data here. We would have had a 25.2% participation rate in ELA and a 93.6% participation rate in math, had those 2022 students been excluded from the data. So that's that I wanted to kind of give you a sense of the participation rate. Now, those students, had they tested, would have affected the numbers you just looked at. So again, that's the reason for the cautious optimism, right? In our results. So in the next slide, we break things down into the subgroups. And this, some of this is really exciting because we start to talk about the growth. The SGP, that's the student growth percentile. And we start to see numbers of growth that are are again, really cause for a cautious optimism. Where our students are exceeding significantly exceeding the the state average, you know, the state mean SGP in all categories in which we got an SGP. So we didn't have enough Hispanic and Latino students to get a mean SGP in that area. That's why it's blank. But in every other area, you can see that we're exceeding growth for our students. So that means regardless of where they were when we got them, some of those students were higher achieving, some were middle achieving, some were lower achieving. That that the students grew from wherever they are, they continued to grow. And that's really what we're looking for. I always love to look at the the growth percentile. And you can see some, again, cautious reasons for cautious optimism in the SGP's here. And some places like I, I just love the ELA score for our vocational programs and how that growth number really popped nearly 70% growth percentile for the the English growth for our vocational students. But again, a lot of, you know, the economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, we have 27% or more, you know, a little bit more than 27% of our students are students with disabilities. So that's a great number to see that that growth for those students. Okay, and then in the next slide, we see the math growth. And again, we see really strong growth numbers here, again, in all the categories in which we have SGP. We see that our growth is significantly better than the state's growth. We do see some lower numbers in terms of meeting or exceeding expectations. Right? But again, I love to, I I like to focus on the growth because the meeting or exceeding expectations is really a lot of that is you kind of, you know, inherited to to the school. So if the growth is good in those areas, then that means we're value at, you know, we're adding value in the instruction at the high school to get the growth. The grows growth numbers up. And and again, reasons for cautious optimism. We do have to factor in the students who didn't test. And so that's why the, you know, the optimism is cautious, but you know, certainly I I've got to credit the staff who, you know, worked so hard through the COVID year last year, as other folks have mentioned, we were in school more more than other folks. And I I do believe that coupled with some of the work in our improvement plan and our work in preparation for NEAS that that folks worked so hard on in the staff and and teachers at the high school. You can see some of that here in in the learning that our students got. So this, again, there's, like, as Greg mentioned earlier, happy to answer questions about any of the other more detailed information that you all got ahead of time. As Maura said, I too am a bit of a nerd when it comes to this stuff and so happy to dig in, you know, anywhere in in the other things you may have looked at along the way. For us at Gloucester High School, what we're doing in response to anything is really framed by our two priority areas. And that is our brain-based culturally responsive instructional practices. So our kids are doing meaningful analysis, evaluation, creation. And they have opportunities to communicate, collaborate and problem solve, which is what our vision of the graduate is. So that's our guiding light for instruction. And then as some, as as folks were talking about about the middle school, same applies to the high school in which the social emotional learning, you know, that students are gaining self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, building relationship skills and then becoming socially aware that those skills, social emotional skills are the underpinning for the academic learning. So the better the social emotional learning and support is, the 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 better student wellness is, the better attendance is, the the better the transition from the middle school to the high school is. And then we have a climate of equity and inclusion at the school. So all our diverse students can grow, learn and grow. That's always our guiding principle. So what that's led us to, those principles have led us to some actions in the next slide. And so the, you know, the left column there, you'll see that, you know, in the complexity of a high school, all the departments are engaged in ongoing development of instruction curriculum assessment. And then in making interventions to improve the learning, particularly our focus within that area is on aligning curriculum so that whether a student's taking this teacher or that teacher, the experiences are all preparing them for some common foundational skills and knowledge and the transferable skills they need when they, when they leave us. So we're making sure that's aligned because there can be drift over time. And so our program leaders are really focused on that alignment with each other and the state standards. We also are kicking up our providing actionable feedback. So when students get information about their performance on a formative assessment, that they're able to make adjustments to improve on that learning for the summative assessment, right? Actionable feedback. I get some feedback, I can do something with it. And we're emphasizing, really emphasizing communication and problem solving in our classes because those are skills that that they're going to help them out on the MCAS, right? The problem solving in math and 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 problem solving communication in English. But more importantly, those skills are going to help them in the transition out of Gloucester High School. So that's our, you know, kind of ongoing area. In the second column, you'll see some of our interventions. We've added, thanks to the budget process and the school committee's support, we've been able to add tier two intervention classes, but similar, different. The detail's different, but the spirit is the same as what you're hearing about the middle school. So we have now, we have intervention classes in English, math and overall academics. We, you heard about STAR 360 at the high school and we have the, we have the Edmentum Exact Path is our way of assessing student progress. And it's also a way of helping identify students who can benefit from the tier two interventions. We're working with attendance works as 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 people know on the attendance interventions because we know we got to get them into the school in order for them to get the benefit of the the education that we're designing for them in the first column you're looking at now. To help with gaps, students who are out for various reasons, COVID disruptions, students who were remote last year, we have expanded after-school interventions. And we have expanded summer school interventions, including English learner interventions that we had at the high school level for the first time this year. All of our teachers across English, social studies, biology and special education have are taking. In fact, some folks were doing it today, the last kind of phase of folks doing keys to literacy. So they're gaining English skills, reading and writing skills in in all of these classes, not just an English class. And our professional development is really geared toward our vision. So, you know, we're practicing getting students to actively, not just memorize things by rote, but really actively process and participate, do something with what they're learning. So they develop those communication, collaboration and problem solving skills they're going to need when they leave. And then we're also implementing for the first time, English learners' student success plans that will hopefully are designed to help us close the gaps with for our English learners. And that's just a fraction of what we're doing because I didn't get into so much of the social emotional learning, which is related as an underpinning, some of what we're doing and expanding, making some changes in special education. But, you know, all exciting areas, our PACE program and Bridge program, all things that are the the, you know, underpinnings that can support these more academic interventions.
Melissa has a question.
Thank you. I'm James. Can you tell me how the expanded after-school intervention program works? In other words, how is a student identified? Is it voluntarily? How many teachers do we have seen at the school? Is it actually teaching the teachers or is it someone else that's doing the interventions? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Sure thing. So so this is in addition to our teachers staying after school to support their students directly. Sure thing. So, so this is in addition to our teachers staying after school to support their students directly. This is about students who have fallen significantly behind or in order to graduate on time, they need one of our online courses or they need a significant chunk made up. So what the, the model is, we're currently in the process of identifying the students based on first term. Multiple failures and we're focusing on the class of twenty twenty-two students. Because we don't have more time for them essentially, right? We, we've got to get them the caught up immediately. So what we did last spring for the class of twenty twenty-one, we had three teachers doing some additional after-school and sometimes Saturday work as well to meet the kids where they are and when they're available. And they're either helping and support them with their current classes and getting caught up. Or they're helping, like I said, with some of our online curriculum in, in places where there might be a gap for the student. And so we're now rolling that out again, starting in term two. So the postings for those positions will be going out and, and we'll be working, starting a little bit earlier this year than we did last year essentially. So where we hopefully can catch more kids up here and keep that graduation rate up high and, and help support, you know, the, some of the students who are maybe most, not maybe, but certainly most impacted by the COVID disruptions.
My second question is EL student success plans. Explain that a little bit. So.
Sure. Well, that's
It sounds great, but I don't know what it is.
No, exactly. Well, it's being designed still. It's, that's the PD. So there's a draft of it that currently exists, a draft of this plan. And then folks will be honing that draft, the, the LL teachers just met with Chris Castle and, and the two ESL teachers at the high school about it yesterday. And they'll be working on this on the PD on Tuesday to go to the next step in the design of this. You know, essentially, so I guess the, essentially it's like taking a look at their access scores. So there's, they're, they're, they're spoken. English skills, listening, reading and writing. And then taking a closer look at those scores and then saying, okay, where are the gaps? What are they missing? And what added instruction might that student need in order to make progress? So that's, it's a quick version of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Any other questions? Guess you did a good job, James.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm pretty tired. So.
I just want to capture one thing which I, which I've said a variety of times, but I think both James in his, in his school improvement plan presentation in June and then also tonight, has a tremendous way of sort of really zeroing in on some essential pieces. And so I just want to just bring back up one thing here. You give me a moment. You can see my screen here, right? Yeah. Presentation? Can people see the presentation?
Yes.
Th- this first column is, is, is gigantic. It, it is the work that we are trying to explain has been happening at elementary schools and needs to really be done in a focused way or, you know, deepen and really get going in a, in a really focused, serious way at the middle school. But the other piece is that that it's happening at the high, and, and so it's been underway, the high school led by James and, and also the, you know, the, the program leaders, the, the department heads. And been doing that work, you know, for the last couple of years. And doing it during incredibly difficult circumstances. And it's a, and, and it's also work, I, I just, I, I, it's hard for me to communicate to the general public and the school committee members. How complicated that work is, is in a comprehensive high school? And how rarely it's done in the way it's being done at Gloucester High School led by James and the department heads and, and, and with the staff. One, one thing it, it's very important to realize, and this is all important for O'Malley as well, is James said a number of times, we're doing it together. You know, we're all doing this. We're all doing the curriculum development. We're all doing the, the approach of problem, you know, problem solving. We have now completed all the keys to literacy. It doesn't mean that folks are doing the same thing. I can tell you, it looks very different in biology in 10th grade versus, you know, ELL in, in, for an 11th grader versus, you know, you know, social studies in, 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 in ninth grade. But the fact that, that, that they're doing it together on the same page, common addressing common problems allows it to really build, accelerate and get impact far beyond if you're doing it different things in different grades and different subject areas. And doing it that way, as James and his team have been leading, is even more complicated in high school. It's, 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 I just, it's hard for me to, to communicate the complexity of it. But and, and some of the cautious optimism, and I really appreciate James, how you described those results from MCAS. I think that's an appropriate way cautious optimism. You know, the progress we will continue to see in the quality of kids learning, their engagement. And then the path as they go on is, is, and we will, we will, we will continue to see that and it'll deepen and improve is absolutely because of the work that James is describing to you tonight. It, it's a, it's a really big deal that I, I hope we can continue to communicate and capture for you and, and the public. So thank you, James, and thank you for your team and the leadership you're showing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me here tonight to have the opportunity to, to present all this.
Okay. Well, thank you, James. No further questions and are you going back to work?
I do have some things to do before, yeah, but I'll, I'll, I'll listen in Jonathan. I'll, I'll stay listening. And thank you Greg for setting up the slides too. I don't want to forget that. You, I really appreciate that part of it.
All right. Greg, anything to wrap us up or?
No, I, I think that's a good note to end on. And, and thank you, James, for tonight's presentation, but also for your steadfast hand at the high school and all the hard work. I get to see it up close and personal. And James really does a great job and works tirelessly. So thank you, James.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks Greg.
So we're going to move on to the East Gloucester and Veterans naming process, which I shared with you in your packet earlier this week in a sort of detailed form. I'll summarize the highlights of it. The intention here is to discuss it, make sure you folks understand it and then get input and feedback and thought, you thought from the committee. And then we'll go back and revise it based on those and bring it back to you, your next meeting for approval. So that's the intention tonight is to get feedback from all of you. Let me share my screen so the, the rest of the folks can see what we're talking about. That is not what I want. This is what I want. So we, I'll go through a few things here. First guiding principles for the naming process. So be inclusive, be in, be transparent. Recognizing and recognizing and support the two schools themselves, their core values, the history of each school. These are two communities we're bringing together that have long, wonderful histories and, and established communities. And as we're naming the school, we have to, that, that's, that's very different than naming, renaming a school that's just by itself. We engage current and former members of the veterans and East Gloucester school communities. So that means students and parents from now and from yesteryear. We have at least one and if not more graduate of these schools that I know, I know two on the school committee now. Who are graduates of these two schools, alumni of these two schools. And then the ultimately also very importantly is the school committee makes the final decision. The public process will, will allow many, many people in the community to engage in providing input, naming, suggesting nominations, giving response and feedback on, on names and semifinalists. But ultimately, all of that is guidance to and input for the school committee to deliberate and also make the final decision. I don't want to go too quickly over be inclusive. It's very important. We'll talk about inclusive and outreach, that sort of stuff. But we're really be inclusive, be transparent, recognize and support these two, these two school communities. Engage this, these school communities and the larger public. And then the school committee, it's ultimately in your hands. So the summary of the steps in the naming process that I'm recommending is a creation of a nominations committee. I'll talk about that more in a moment. I will outreach the community, including the neighborhoods that they're both in and the alumni of both schools and broader and, and, you know, and, and the general community as well. Nominations can be submitted by any member of the public. We'll talk about a little bit of how that will be done. Nomination committee would review all those nominations and identify up to ten semifinalists. The nomination committee would review each semifinalist, discuss each nomination and then develop presentations on those names for the community to observe, see, read, listen to about the values or the, the say pros, advantages of those names. We'll have public input on, on those semifinalists. People will be able to comment on and provide input on their feelings on those semifinalist names. And then the nominations committee will take that input and provide, sorry, it should be said, no more than four finalists to the school committee. In terms of, you know, what they recommend as the final name for the school committee to consider. The school committee at that point would hold public hearings on the finalists. They would deliberate, you deliberate and then make a final decision on the school name. Let me, um, go to the timeline here, then I'll circle back. The timeline we're looking at is launch, the initial communications and outreach about the naming process in January, open the nominations in January. How about a month or so for nominations to be submitted? Semifinalists will be identified in February, early March. At that point, we'd have public input on the semifinalists in March and April. So we get a lot of input on those, say, no more than ten semifinalists. And do that in a variety of ways that people know what they are and can, can comment on them from an informed point of view. In May, the nominations committee would, after, you know, after looking all over that input and also talking to an alumni group that we would form, alumni committee we'd form, they would make recommendations to no more than four finalists to the school committee with the hopes of in June aiming to make the, the, the final, the finalists, school committee considers the finalists and votes on a new name. So let's just back up a little bit because there are a couple of important pieces here. We publicize the process through social media, the superintendent and principal and PTO outreach. So really rely on those folks in terms of their communications broadly, the Gloucester Daily Times. And also I think something that will be very helpful is, and we're aware of some alumni groups from both schools in the community through social media and they can get the word out as well. Really important about nominations, as, as I mentioned already, any community, community member can nominate a name for the school. They'll have a variety of ways of folks to submit those nominations, both electronically, but also through pen and paper. And that schools would also community sites. Input on semifinalists. So once the semifinalists are named, are named, we'll give folks another ways of providing input on those semifinalists. I do want to be clear, that's not voting. If this isn't about, you know, the more input or the more responses a semifinalist gets, the more likely that name is. Because this isn't about voting for it. It's about giving input to the school committee. And of course, as we said, I've already said, ultimately, the school committee or the folks will take all of the input from the nominating nominations committee, from the public and from the alumni group and deliberate and make the final decision. I wanted to say one important thing about the nominations committee, what this is, because obviously this, this group has a significant role. And it's a little bit different. What I'm recommending is something a little bit different than sort of a typical adult only, adult only committee that does this work. I'm strongly recommending one that involves the students in a much, in a, in a very significant way from both these schools. And those are students who are at these schools now. So third, fourth and fifth graders, and I do understand that those folks are young. But also students at O'Malley and GHS who went to veterans and went to East Gloucester. And working with the principals and working with some staff. I am very confident and I've actually seen this work before that those students, as I always say, if we ask great things of our students and we provide the support to them and guidance and instruction to them, they can accomplish great things. And while this may be asking a lot of students with that very professional guidance from our principals and our, and our staff members, they will be able to run a rate, strong process, make decisions, help inform the, the community about the names and the nominees. And then bring forward to the committee, a small number of names for the committee to consider. But they will be looking at, and I'm recommending that, that this is the group that's taking the input from the community, all the input we'll get. Considering it, discussing it, and then ultimately moving forward a small number of names to the school committee to make the final decision. So let me pause there. I also have, if you want to look at the, the school committee policy itself, but that's sort of a brief overview, fast, obviously. You also, I think, have read the more detailed version. But just happy to, questions to clarify it and then also any suggestions to strengthen it.
Thanks. So Ben, I want to say I love the idea of having students on the committee. I love it. So I think that's fantastic. In addition to alumni and other adults. I'm wondering, given the size and the diversity of the, of the committee, I don't know how, you've been through naming processes before. I mean, how many submissions are expected? Are we talking three hundred? Are we talking two thousand? I mean, how does this, how does this work? And how, what's realistic for this group to really be able to go through?
Yeah. So I, I haven't done this in a lot of places. I've done, done one very powerful process in Brookline. And which was very well publicized. And I believe if I remember the numbers, there was a hundred and fifty nominations. Many of the, you distinct, I think it was a hundred and fifty distinct ones, meaning there are a lot of duplicates. And then a number of those were sort of throwaways. Bodie McBoatface wasn't a legitimate suggestion. Okay. So I don't know, I don't, it's hard, you know, I, like I said, I don't, I don't have a history of doing five, five or six or seven of these. Thank goodness. Because they're, they're, they're challenging, they're difficult. But I, I don't think it's in the, it's, it's in the thou, I, I would not expect in any way, shape or form the thousands, you know? Yeah.
On a ballpark. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Joel?
Thanks. Um, I've kind of said this informally, but I want to have the conversation at a meeting and some was, I'm just thinking given everything that's going on in the district right now and all the important work that needs to get done is renaming. You know, the school, the veteran site, a wise use of time and energy is my first question, you know, is it, is it wise to add this to the plate of things that have to get done in the school community right now? Two, is this inviting a necessary division among the community? Is this going to be one more thing for citizens to be upset about, angry about, you're dishonoring this, you're not respecting that? And again, just for historical context, in the last fifteen years, we've closed an elementary school. And that was fuller and that served a community three times larger than what East Gloucester serves. And those students were just taken from their old school. They were put to five different schools. And there's not so much as a flower pot named after Milton Fuller these days. And everyone survived. Everyone lived, right? West Parish was an elementary school that was rebuilt on the same site. And there was no renaming of the school. And so this EG Vets thing sounds like a combination of both. We're closing an elementary school like we did with Fuller. We've re, we're rebuilding elementary school on the same site like we do with West Parish. Why are we now, unlike we have these past two times, going to add all this potential for controversy, all this time, all this energy? When normally we just closed the school, we closed the school. We rebuilt the school. We just rebuilt the school. And it just seems like we're really, you know, doing something different. And so let me hear why it's right to do it differently this time and why we would take this on.
Am I sure that's to me or to the committee or?
But that's to you because this, this is your idea, right? This, you, you for the proposed path forward. And this committee has never done this before. They've just closed schools and rebuilt schools without any name changes. And so this is, this is brand new for us. And I'm curious as to why, especially given everything that's going on right now. This is a wise move for us to break precedent and go in a different direction.
So Matt, I see your hand up. Does that mean you, you want to answer? I, I can.
Melissa?
Hi. So, Joel, I'm a little taken back by your, by your statement here. Considering we met as a naming group not too long ago and we're talking about this fantastic idea of how to name the school. But with that.
I'm just, it's my personal opinion, I'm saying the question has to be asked, and I want to have a discussion.
Right, so. I, I guess I'm a little taken back by it, like I said, because we did have a deep discussion on this, and we were, all three of us, you, Kathy and I, were very enthusiastic about reaching out to the community to come up with a name, and now here we're talking about how we're too busy and can't come up with it, shouldn't come up with a name. So I, I guess I haven't caught the full grasp of that yet. But just for my two cents, because I don't think this answer should just be by the superintendent, you know? I mean, the policy says that the superintendent puts forward a process to name the school, it doesn't say whether he decides to do it or not. We asked him to do it, so he's done it, and I look forward to it. And I don't want to be put in a position to call it the EG slash Vets or whatever you suggested as a conversation. I think we owe to the community to name the school, there's a lot going into the school, it's fun, it's happy, let's enjoy it.
Do we not owe it to the West Parish or Fuller communities? Because they didn't get those opportunities, I'm just confused why this community got an opportunity and the other ones didn't get. And again, like right there, I think it's a positive thing too, I think this could be a lot of fun, but, you know, there is going to be this, we're othering, right? This is, this is getting a different treatment than other people's schools have gotten in recent years with their rebuilds or their closures.
And we didn't get any pushback from West Parish for naming the school? And I don't see why we would get pushed back now for trying to come up with a name of one school when we're consolidating two. We have not consolidated two schools before, so we didn't have this issue before, so this is different than West Parish. So let's keep it positive, there's too much negativity in the world, and this is a conversation that's going there. Please.
Laura?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, this is about community building, right? This is two communities coming together in a positive way. I wasn't here during Fuller, but that's not what was happening when Fuller was closed, right? That was the dispersion, the dispersal of a, of a community into other schools. And West Parish was a, was a distinct school rebuilt on the same site with the same community. So I think it's a, it's a question to raise, but obviously this is, from my perspective, this is about strengthening and building two communities coming together and making one community. And, and an important part of that is, is naming them, is doing the naming together as a community project as the first sort of element of coming together.
Kathy, you had your hand up?
I did, but Laura said exactly what I, you know, my approach, which is, we have two wonderful communities coming together, and I think a, you know, part of that process is, is having things that happen over the next two years before it actually opens, and, and they come together. You know, physically, but in the meantime, we're doing things to help them get to know each other better and share all the great things about each one in terms of their own personalities.
Melissa?
I just want to comment, so I was on the Essex Tech Committee when we merged Essex Aggie and North Shore Vocational School, and naming the school was extremely fun, and the students were involved, and it was a great, a great result came from the collaboration of all the teaching staff and the students and the parents of the students that chose to be involved in that. So I, if there's something this community needs, I think it's something positive, and this is a great opportunity to bring those conversations forward.
I appreciate, I appreciate everyone responding, because again, you know, I don't think that I'm necessarily opposed to it, and I'm, I'm guessing, and I'm probably going to throw a couple, you know, might not be Bodie McBoatface, I kind of think I can top that, but I'm happy to try. But it was a question that I want to have, have the discussion, if someone looks and goes, you know, why are we going through all this? I think Laura, you know, can I hit it on the head, like, it's not necessarily the importance of whatever the name on the sign is, but the process to getting to that name actually helps. You know, like when the kids, the third graders were singing The White Stripes at that ceremony, the, the groundbreaking, right? This is, this is one of those things, necessarily the name itself, it's the name, name itself is actually the, the process that is the focus here, right? Am I getting that right?
I, I, I think so, and I think another piece on it is, you know, you're, you're, you're bringing two, together two communities, and you want to, you want to build that, where there's a lot of these two communities are, have to build together over a number of years. And this is one of the many ways to, to build that community together. If it was just going to be East Gloucester or just Vets, you know, then that's not two communities coming together. That's someone moving into someone else's house, you know, even though it's being built jointly. And so that would, I really, I think really would cause harm, honestly. I'm not suggesting, you're, you're suggesting that, Joel, but I do believe that, that, that can cause harm. If, you know, and, and it may through this process be determined that a name such as East Gloucester Vets is the right name. I'm not saying it is or not, but, but to have a process to decide that, rather than just a, a community process where both school communities and others are involved, and resulting in that same thing is actually very powerful and positive, rather than just, you know, school members, you deciding on your own that, that, that it's going to be that. So other, or, or suggestions or modifications or changes, I think one thing I heard already is the really stressed community building, the community building aspect of this, which is there, but I think can, can really be highlighted as we go forward. But other, other thoughts?
I guess my only fear is, you know, avoiding making this something, that, I mean, my genuine concern, what I said was really just like inviting an opportunity for this to be a clash kind of thing, like to, to somehow, you know, this, this nominee committee is going to be its own thing, but there's just somehow, if we, there's some, a way to detect faction building, you know what I'm trying to say? All of a sudden, it looks like there, this factions growing over something as I think small as the name of the building, I appreciate, but the process is large, the end result, it's just name of the building, right? It's just the name of the building, it's not the end of the world, if yours does it as I could pick. But I worry that, given the climate in the city, you know, how the climate in this country right now, is this just one more thing that's going to let people, you know, become in factions and then become upset with each other? So I don't know how we put safeguards in place to like, if we see that, pump the brakes, cool, say, hey, guys, we're just, we're just naming the school here, like, you know, but that's a, a pretty aggressive Facebook group you're going on about, you know, why this name is good and that name is bad, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. No, I, 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 I don't have to respond, but I mean, but I will, I, I do entirely, Joel, and I think, you know, a part of it is continue to remind people about what's okay behavior and what's not, and being, being bold enough and brave enough to say, hey, you know, that's crossing a line, which is harder and harder to do today, but probably needs to happen more and more, honestly. And that's not a way to shut people down, but to talk about and explain and lead in a way that, you know, we can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. But I just think, again, that might be pie in the sky, but, but it needs to be said, and probably needs to be said more often. So I think that's good about safeguards and reminding people, you know, and setting it up in a way and reminding people that this is about coming together and, and celebration of positivity. And while some, while we, folks at times may go, may go down a different path, you know, we can bring them back.
Just thinking, like, even with the name itself, right? You go, I don't think anyone here, I'm certainly not, I don't think anyone here is trying to be disrespectful to veterans by suggesting that it may have been a different name, right? Not, I imagine veterans will probably pop up as one of those, someone's going to submit it, if not multiple people, right? But like, that's one of those things where I don't want, you know, was otherwise, as Melissa pointed out, should be a positive and upbeat thing for it to become like a, oh, we're, you know, Gloucester School Committee disrespects the veterans by stripping the name from, you know, the Webster Street School site, like, that kind of thing, right? So I just don't know how we monitor to catch.
That would never happen here, Joel, never. You would never hear that comment, Gloucester.
Okay, I, I, I just have a nuts and bolts question, Ben. How does the nominating committee get formed? You're pretty specific about who's on it, but is it appointed by the school committee? Is it, do people apply? How does that work?
There, there, I think there's a variety of ways we can do that, and this is one detail we'd have to work out, but something along the lines of, of students who nominate themselves, and they'll have to sort of explain, you know, what it is, why they want to be part of it, but also a, a couple of examples of, of, you know, why they, you know, what they've done that would show that they'd be a good, a good, you know, partner on this. And then also they would, I think we could ask them to name a person who can speak for them. You know, it could be a teacher, it could be someone who, who knows them from the community, you know, a coach, that sort of thing. A, a tutor, a person who, who maybe teaches them, you know, some lessons, but someone who can speak on their behalf. And then also, we could have staff members or teachers nominate a, a student as well. So, because you're going to have, you know, different age group, different ages of students, but I think sort of both and, so one that could be, someone can, you know, sort of tap somebody on the shoulder and say, I think this, this student would be great, but also students can step up themselves. That will require a fair bit of outreach. Luckily, we have a lot of captive audiences in our, in our classrooms for, for teachers and others to, to tell kids, you know, that this is going to happen.
Okay, any other questions? Kathy?
So, with respect to, to alumni, some of the, you know, recent high school graduates are probably going to, you know, I'm just thinking timing of getting the word out. You know, it would have to be sooner than not, I mean, if we start sending things out in January 10th, you will have missed a lot of kids who might be home for their break from college. You know, we'll have to think about the logistics of, is there an option for virtual participation, which I think would be inclusive? Anyway, so definitely the communication to get people excited about it and get them to want to participate in something that, you know, hopefully would be fun and fond memories for them to take, take part in.
Definitely, and I think, I think one piece on this was, is, is learning and hearing and finding, you know, the ways that, you know, alumni of, whether it's specific schools, and, and, and some, some of them may have groups, and actually my elementary school, although I was there a long, long time ago, actually has a Facebook group. So, you know, of, you know, for alumni, you know, or so whether the, I don't know whether those exist in, in Gloucester, there's a good chance, but I think, you know, some people who can find them out. And then there's also other groups in terms of more recent graduates as well. So, but I know we have some Facebook sleuths that can help us with that. But I do, you know, that outreach is crucial, and, and, and having connectors from the community do that outreach will be crucial, and part of that is us giving them, you know, really simple, you know, infographics or graphics or images that they can, you know, share easily, and that can connect people to next steps.
Laura?
Thanks, I was just going to suggest for, you know, a lot of people aren't on social media, or a lot of people don't, it's, it's, communication is really tricky, and to try to reach out to a community, I would hope we could use, you know, the library, the Y, the open door, you know, even just putting up, you know, like really old school, like flyers and, you know, with, even with little tabs to pull out, but just ways to reach people that are much, you know, that are more paper-based and less online or newspaper-based. I would, I would think we should use all those resources if we can.
Yeah, yeah, I think both and, right, is what you're saying, both and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Okay, Melissa, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so I just had some ideas about how to get alumni here, I mean, through, through class presidents and, and and those that are organizing class reunions, which happens every year in the city. So, but I can talk to Ben about that offline, I just had ideas, but this isn't the time to talk about it.
Great, thank you, that's great, very helpful.
Are we ready to move on to our next item? I think so.
Great. The next item, ah, yes, is my evaluation, my goal, sorry, and evaluation process. And so in your packet from the November 10th, and then also your packet for tonight, you've had to put my goals in there, what I'm showing you now is just the sort of summary page with each goal. So operating school safely, leading for the long term, building the capacity and collaboration of the district leadership team, community engagement in support of our students and families, and then community engagement, wait a minute, sorry, that looks like a typo, sorry about that. That the last one there is actually about our school buildings and facilities. And as you all know, that there are, oh, I don't know, four or five pages underneath this of specific detail, which I'm happy to, and, you know, to discuss or get feedback on or, or shape based on conversation tonight. I'm not going to present, go, go through each, each one of them in the detail that you have in, in your packet, but just to summarize, operating school safely is about not only instituting the safety protocols that the state has put forward and abiding by those, but also and, you know, to keep our schools safe and healthy in terms of COVID, but also in, in following the, the testing protocols and distancing protocols and masking, and doing everything we can to make sure that our students and schools are safe and staff, but then also using the tools and resources and the funding available from the city, state, and federal governments to make sure that we're providing the academic, social, emotional, mental health support for our students in, in terms of using resources that are available to us in a way they haven't been before. So make sure we're utilizing those well to respond to the pandemic and make sure that we are taking full advantage of those opportunities. So that's operating school safely. Leading for the long term is about moving from beyond the crisis management that the pandemic really required last year, and moving towards sustainable improvement over time. And that's in about student learning, student engagement, and then our professional collaborative culture, so how we work together as professionals in our schools to continue to improve the way we teach and support our students. A big piece of that, as we've talked about before, is the developing the plan for ongoing improvement. And another big piece of that is the work we talked about tonight with O'Malley Gloucester High School and earlier with our, our elementary schools. So, but the real question there is, how do, the work that I will be doing this year with my entry plan, and now the work we're doing on our plan for ongoing improvement, so we have a clear path about continuing to strengthen our schools over the next three years. The capacity of, and the collaboration of the district leadership team, so how are the district leaders and, and school leaders working together in a way that helps us lead, so we're always improving and always strengthening our practice, that we're leading for excellence and equity and supporting all of our students and staff. And that's about working together to improve our own practice, to be reflective, to be problem-solving oriented, and, and ultimately to be supportive of our, our, and serve our, our students and our staff and our families. Community engagement, so continue to build relationships and partnerships with our community organizations, and community leaders and families, and, and that is in service of better supporting our students. Partnerships are great, good ones take a lot of work, effort, coordination, and collaboration. And the best ones are focused on our main goals, which is deepening student engagement, engagement and improving student learning, and making sure our kids, our students have pathway, clear pathways after, after graduation. I mean, we, the, the great news, of course, is that we have lots of great partners in our community that have been working with us schools for many years, but we really want to make sure that those partnerships are, continue to be focused, clear for our partners and ourselves in terms of the work we're doing together, and always focus on better supporting our students. And the last one is improving the quality of our school buildings and facilities. This is a place where we continue to make a lot of progress, and hopefully next week with the city council addressing the modulars and at Beaman and Plum Cove, we'll take another step in that direction of long-term planning and maintenance repair of our, 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 our buildings. But as you can see in the detail of that, there's quite a bit of areas we're working on, really significant areas we're, we're working on, we'll continue to make progress this year, whether it's the O'Malley Windows, obviously the new East Gloucester Vet School to be named later, and then continue to improve and maintain our buildings at a quality level. So those are, those are the, let me just go through the timeline here, which is similar to, to last year. So in the week of May 2nd, I provide goals and evidence in a rubric to the school commit, school committee. You would have a couple of weeks to review that evidence and complete the evaluation rubric, which you get to the school committee chair towards the end of May there. We would, as we did last year, we would discuss the process and check in on any progress on May 25th, just to sort of see if anything needs to be adjusted. Just to sort of see if anything needs to be adjusted. On June 3rd or by June 3rd, I'm sorry, the chair completes a written report and distributes to the school committee in advance of the June 8th meeting. At that point, we have, um, you discuss and, and give a public report on my evaluation. So let me just stop there. And again, I know that this is just a summary page, but I'm happy to go into detail from the, you know, the, the, the complete goals that you have in your packet.
Melissa.
So my question isn't about the goals, Ben, because I think you did an excellent job in communicating them to us now and in prior conversations. My request is to add another date to the calendar you just showed us, which would be to present, have some sort of small presentation at the beginning of the year for when new school committee members come on board, so that they have an understanding of what the expectation is come time to your evaluation, as opposed to leaving it to happen a couple of months before. And it's going to be one thing to train on the evaluation system, but understanding what you're doing and why I think is important to get out early in the year. Knowing there's only six months to your evaluation.
Yep. So let me make sure I understand that suggestion, which is so ultimately early in the term, do you mean like perhaps sitting down with just the new members themselves and or, or maybe going over in a perhaps a personnel or program subcommittee with them specifically to understand what the goals are in the process, is that?
I think it should be done in public. It could be done at a subcommittee level if you feel that way. Um, at Personnel, usually because that's who does, Personnel usually governs evaluations. But, um, it doesn't matter, but I'm just saying, I think it should be done in public and then there could be some input from it, new ideas or changes or adjustments, because we know that can happen along the way as well. Uh, but I just think there should be conversation as soon as possible with new members of what the expectations will be from you. So that they, they're not confused when it comes time that, that really scary time, the first time you're doing a superintendent evaluation.
Yeah. Happy to go over with them about what the goals are in, in, in depth way, happy to go over with them about the process, so they understand what's coming up and, 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 and working with them on that. A little wary, no, quite wary of having those folks make changes.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is just your explanation of your goals is enough. I think we should bring in MASC, which they have to take that charting the course anyway. But you can bring in MASC to just do a learning session on evaluation, which I think we can all benefit from, to be honest with you, no matter how many times you do it, no matter how many times you hear it, it's always good to get that little bit of input, which makes you a better evaluator as you go on. I'm saying just to inform the new members of what your goals are and have a good understanding of them. And I think that might enhance our, our conversation as a whole, as a committee as well. So I think it should be done publicly.
Great, thank you. Very helpful.
And not long, I'm not trying to put a lot of pressure on you, you've already done the work. It's just a matter of having the conversation.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, and, you know, as, as, you know, we'll talk about more and any, and I'm sure Laura and Sam will have some suggestions as well. But to, to bring along the new, the new committee members, including, you know, the new mayor, is, is really crucial on many, on many pieces, and this one is, is, is on top of that list. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great suggestion, Melissa.
I have lots of great suggestions.
Any other, any other questions or, or discussions about the superintendent's goals? Seeing none. I would look for a, a motion that we accept these as his goals. For the.
For move. So move. Do we do a motion? I didn't hear it.
Did I hear motion?
You said you wanted a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
So I moved that we were approved the superintendent's goals as presented.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Great job, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Yes, very well done. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Erin Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. And we're ready to move on to the next item.
Okay, we're going to skip the update on, on the, on the planning, I'm sorry. Let me give it just a quick update, but I'll give you a more thorough one on the December 15th meeting. As you know, and I'll give you dates and timelines and the work we've been doing. The plan for ongoing improved, the Gloucester Public Schools Plan for Ongoing Improvement is our, is the three-year plan we're developing that will lay out to the community, to the, to the schools and, and the school committee and the community, what we will continue to be doing, what we'll start doing, and the, what we can, what we can be held accountable for accomplishing over the next three years. It's, it, it comes from, or it, it's an outgrowth of the entry plan findings report that, you know, shared earlier this, this, this year. We are working with, I am working with Greg Bach and Kate Provost and Stephanie Delisi is helping out in terms of meeting with each, each staff from each school. And so I'll give you a little more detail about that next time in terms of who we met with, what the questions we're asking, some of the input we're gathering and what, what we're focusing on, and then also share with you sort of plan, plan going forward. The goal as it has been from the beginning of the year is to get this done this year. We were thinking January at one point, that's not going to happen. But we'll have it wrapped up before, hopefully, looking at, at, at April or May. But I'll give you just more details next time. And then the last piece would be the budget calendar for the year, which Kathy, I'm right in saying we share this at BNF? Is that?
Yeah, yes, we went over that at BNF.
Okay, so I'm just going to put it on the, on the screen here, so I can make it a little bit bigger. This really mirrors the process last year. So, as you may remember, we have budget meetings that are, that have already started. We've worked with the district leadership team on our guidelines for the budget planning process. Shared them with that, shared them, shared those with them earlier this month. Those budget meetings result in our, and also really the, the plan for ongoing improvement as we're developing it will identify specific prior, priorities. We will start, as we did last year, with what those priorities are based on all the meetings we're having, the planning we've been doing, and the work we've been doing. And we'll share those priorities with you by school and department in the BNF meetings that are listed there, January 6th, 11th and 13th. This is exactly what we did last year and to, to, we got great feedback from the committee about starting with that. And from those priorities that we'll lay out in those and present in those early January meetings, then the budget, you'll, you'll see the budget reflected in the, in those priorities. And, and then we'll show the district budget first, the BNF on January 19th, and then to the full committee in early February. We weren't clear last year about when you would get the actual budget book, and so we're, you're having it on the, on the calendar right here, February 16th, you'll get the full budget book to review. About a month later, you'll have the, the public, your vote on the public hearing budget. And as you remember, you know, the budget adjusts and modifies based on some input and feedback along the way here to some degree. And then we'll have the BNF and the school committee vote on the public hearing budget, we'll have the budget to the, we'll have the actual public hearing on the budgets required by state statute in middle of April. That leads to the final approval from the school committee in late April, and then the budget to the mayor and the city council in May, and they typically finish that up in the beginning of June after their own hearings as well. So it's, um, most of you, all of us have been through this before, but just want to lay those dates out to you. We'll stick to those dates and, and hopefully that it'll be as informative and as focused and hopefully as successful as last year's. I'll stop that, but can put it back up if there are questions.
Laura.
So I have two things. One, just an observation, right? So now we have June, the evaluation, I'm just pointing out all of the things that are all going to converge in June. Oops, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah.
It's like I'm frozen. Oh, good. Okay. So just, just, you know, pointing out what we already know, right? Budgets, nominating committee, your evaluation, you know, in the same two meetings. Secondly, is there a place that these calendars live on the website?
I don't know if there's a budget, how, how we do that, Gary? How do we, how do we share budget information on the website?
Well, that's going to be part of the budget book, the school, the calendar. So, and that will be provided February 16th. But if you want to look at abbreviated calendar, you can see it in the November.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to sort of.
Yeah, so I think, I think what we can do so.
So people can see the calendar and know, you know, if they're interested in tuning in to.
Yeah. What we had, I don't think we had this here. We had a budget, I've had, we're, we're sort of a budget central page, budgets, budget central page linked from the homepage. And that could, um, go to our finance, you know, website, a webpage rather, which is, you know, but let me back up. We are literally in the, in the, in the process right now of redoing the entire district website. That will be launched, sort of a soft launch, meaning it won't be completely, completely redone in, in January. And so on that, I think it, you know, one of the really important pieces is that people can get budget information easily. And that starts with the budget process, obviously, and then drafts and presentations. So what we'll have is we'll have, be able to have department sort of webpages, sites that can be easily updated by the department heads. And so this is a place where Gary and Cody and can have, you know, real full access to updating and controlling that. So we should be able to do a much better job in terms of just having information available for folks and, and easy access to it.
Yeah, I think calendars being accessible to the public would be, would be very helpful.
Yeah. And we'll also, I mean, we'll have, we'll have the, the calendar as you see it sort of laid out with the details, but we'll also make sure that those different pieces are on the, you know, the, the, the district-wide calendar, which has various events and things like that.
Great. Is that, is that calendar going to be expanded and made? Currently, you just have like a little line and the Zoom link. Is that calendar going to be more, I mean, this is another question, but more expansive and more detailed?
I, I don't know about that. We'll have like a, you know, a 30-day thing, or you have options to do it different, two different ways, a list like that, which you can scroll through. So I don't know that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Melissa.
Have we, I don't know that we've discussed this, but Zoom is still here with us, whether we're meeting in person or not. I guess my question is budget, will it be, will there be an opportunity to record our meeting so that it's making them available to the public? Because I mean, we don't ask for public feedback until the public hearing. So people being able to access Zoom meetings, are we going to have that ability, or are we just going to meet in person and stop doing Zoom? I, I know that really hasn't been discussed, but I think that helps too. Laura's saying, you know, being informative to the public, those really interested can watch Zoom meetings if we have them, but if not, then we need to be clear on the dates that we're meeting and what far, if that's the case. I'm not looking for an answer there, I'm just putting that out there, you know?
Well, I mean, all our Zoom, Maria, you might be able to help, help with this. All, all our Zoom, all our meetings that have been on Zoom are all available through the city website to, to be viewed. Maria, I have that right, right?
Yes.
They are for a certain amount of time, and I don't know what that amount of time is.
It's a year, that's over a year. But my question is, is every single meeting that we held, is it a Zoom meeting? And the answer is no. So I just want to curious that, just to make sure that these finance meetings will be on Zoom for people to watch. Will be helpful.
BNF or on Zoom?
Yeah.
They're all on Zoom.
But are they going to continue to be, I guess, is my question.
I hope forever, right?
That, yeah, that's a whole different question. What I will say is that, is it whether it's the presentation themselves or recordings of meetings that are like, like, for example, like budget meetings that are happening in BNF in the beginning of January, I feel like they should be on that, on that budget central page, which I was, you know, which, which Laura brought up, you know, so you have easy access to those sorts of things. That's what I've done in the past. And so you have, people can look back or choose to look back and specific meetings, specific presentations. So we should have that up there.
All right. Anything else before we move on to our committee reports? Seeing none. Kathy, we have a building finance subcommittee report.
Yes. BNF met on November 17th, I believe. I think the, there are two, two things of note to report on. One is the, we've got a projection of food service and how that has been operating this year. As you know, meals have been free to all students last year and this year, or at least since the pandemic began. And we are running at a slight deficit, but we also expect that the federal government will give new pricing, I think it's as of January 1st. So so the meal reimbursement rate is likely to go up a bit. So this, we, we're not really actually, we, we still have a positive balance in the food service account, but we're kind of eating away at it a little bit. So we're just keeping an eye on that as we go forward. And Gary is going to give an update on the window replacement project at O'Malley Innovation Middle School.
Yes, thank you. The MSBA has invited the district into the accelerated repair program for the window replacement project. One of the MSBA requirements of the program is for the school committee and the city council slash mayor to approve funding for the schematic design and feasibility study. And that is estimated that the cost of the study and design, schematic design is estimated to be $100,000. We have it budgeted under school equipment as part of the district budget. This item is also on the agenda as an action item to take action. We need to, both the city and the school committee need to document that the funding has been approved by both bodies. Afterwards, from a year from the date of acceptance into the program and prior to October 27th, 2022, the district, MSBA and the city will need to enter into a project funding agreement. And we estimate if all goes well, we anticipate the window replacement project to be completed during the summer of 2023. So that's my update on the window replacement project.
Okay.
And we discussed that during BNF. And the full report is in the November BNF packet.
Right. So, um, probably Jonathan time, if anybody has any questions for Gary before I make a motion?
Sure. Any questions? We, we went over this at BNF. Okay.
Okay. So I make a motion that we authorize the chief financial officer to appropriate up to $100,000 for the O'Malley Window Replacement Project feasibility study and schematic design.
Second. Any discussion? Joel.
Um, the, the committee will at a separate time authorize the execution of that agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to, I'm not going to be here, I just want to make sure everyone, those, what I brought up at BNF, you know, just get looked at before the, the final agreement gets executed by the, the future city CEO, I guess.
Uh, what Joel is referring to is a, a project compliance agreement that this, both the, the school committee chair as well as the superintendent need to enter into. Uh, and there's 35 requirements. It's basically, well, it's 35 requirements, but basically it's followed the MSBA rules to be part of the program. And the 35 items are in the November 17th BNF packet for anybody to review. And then we'll have a separate.
For anybody to review. And then we'll have a separate. Approval on that document. Prior to February of 2022, which is the submission date.
All right. Any other discussion? Or questions? Seeing none. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Herman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Favazza.
Us.
Okay, carries unanimously. And that takes care of our business. We're not going to, we're going to table the approval of the. The ASMEB contract until we get the, the one. Item rephrased and, and we get confirmation from them that they've approved it. So we'll take that up at our next meeting. East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Update. They, right now, we're at the point where we're waiting for the bids to come in. That's, and there's a date for that. I know we put off next school building committee meeting. Because the, the bids were not going to be in. And with the building committee will have to approve them. So rather than being next Thursday, the school building committee. Will be the week of the, it's going to be the 17th, there's something like that, right?
November 16th, and we're meeting at 3 o'clock in the afternoon because of the conflicts.
Yeah. So that's basically be, well, the bids will be in, it'll, it'll be to approve the bids.
And then, and then just one additional piece on that. The early packages that were, you know, they were already approved. Enable the, the site mobilization, but also more importantly, this month we'll start to see. Concrete poured and footings installed. Which leads to foundation and then also, so that's, so that's, that's December into January. Or, you know, the concrete footings, which are the, you know, foundation of the building. So.
Melissa?
So I, I apologize. I haven't watched the past couple of building committee meetings, but is there some sort of drainage system going in on down there? Before the foundation goes in?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so. I just don't remember talking about it, but I, I mean, if you look at the site, it's obvious if there's water there. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's two, there's basically a, a temporary one for during construction. And then there's, there'll be the permanent one.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I, as far as the support for hospital nine to six. Where's, we, the letter has been sent to DPW and we're waiting for reply. So that's pretty much it with that. Anything else? Anybody like to bring up before we adjourn?
Just one thing. Two members are ending their illustrious careers, some longer than others at next meeting. And I don't know. What's that?
The mayor is a member of the school committee.
Right, right. Three, sorry, three. And I just don't know if there should be an appropriate, you know, fanfare and celebration or not in honor of those, of those folks. But if, if so, just want to bring that up in case anyone wants to take care of that.
Are we meeting in person?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're meeting in person except for tonight because the, because the, the IT firewall stuff. So, yeah, we're in person.
We can come up with something.
Yeah, good. Pointing out. Thank you.
Can I bring up a school matter though before, something we talked about earlier? In our. Consent agenda. When we accepted the $1,000 grant. There was a request in that letter too. Regarding maybe this is a potential program going forward. So I just don't want to lose sight of that. I don't, it probably should be referred to BNF to see how the $1,000 is spent this year. And then see if his wish could be honored to make this something longstanding. So just review the letter again and send it to BNF at some point for a conversation.
Great. So I will.
Can't afford transportation. So if there's a way for us to continue that, that ability. Somehow, some way, it's, it's a good conversation to have.
Yeah, I, I don't know. With our own transportation, this was specific to the high school, correct?
Yeah.
And, and that's provided by CADA. And I don't know, I mean, our, we have waivers for people that are on. Assistance.
For CADA?
No, I said, I don't know whether CADA. So we need to find that out first.
Right. So I just don't want to lose sight of it, you know, because it's a great idea and it's very generous that he gave us the money and the concern is real. And I just don't want to, he requested that it potentially get carried on if need be, and I just don't want to lose sight of that. So.
And it would be, it would be nice also if anybody's taken advantage of that, right? Because he gave it for like immediate use.
Yeah. We could track to see how it's being used and what, who's using it and determine if it's needed in future years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I assume we got a motion in a second there. Maria, roll call vote please. Although I don't see Maria anymore. She seems to have disappeared.
Maria, Maria got booted out.
Booted out. Okay. Well, I'll take the roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Laura? Laura? You're shaking your head. Joel?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jonathan. Yes. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much. And we'll see you all soon.
Night, everyone.